Please, gentlemen, a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please proceed. Remember to silence your cellphones if you have them with you. Our first item on the agenda, number four, because we got some closed session interviews earlier today, is citizen concerns, for anyone who'd like to approach the board on an item that's not already listed on the agenda. Hearing none, item five is approval of the agenda for September 5th. I'll move it. Second by Taylor, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Item six through 10 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by board members. Item six is approval of the minutes of the August 29th meeting. Item seven is approval of the claims. Item eight from Board Administration includes item A, approval of a notice of property sale resolution for parcels, also known as 1667 and 1673 of West Luna Avenue, and setting that for Tuesday, September 19th at 4:35 PM. Item B is approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcels, also known as 1924 Ingleside Avenue, and setting that for Tuesday, September 19th at 4:37 PM. Item nine from Human Resources includes item A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and item B, authorization of the chairman to sign the authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item 10 from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera, is consideration of a permit for use of the right-of-way for an underground utility known as Mid-American Energy. This completes the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion by DeWitt to approve the consent agenda as their discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item 11 for Human Resources, Director Gillen. Would you like to discuss this information item and the presentation of awards certificate?
David Gleiser. As we started approximately two years ago recognizing the blood bank and the drive to give blood, we do have a certificate of award for one of our employees for four hours of paid time off because of the fact that he has donated a gallon of blood.
With that, David, we'd like to recognize you for your generous contribution.
Thank you.
Well done, David. I hope you still feel okay, losing all that blood. But I understand it was over time. Very good. Item 12 from Conservation. Don Snyder's on this agenda item. It's for action. This is approval of a proclamation for Woodbury County Lus Hills and Heritage Week. And I've been asked to read this resolution, but first, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon. Rich Pope is here somewhere. Rich Pope is the president of the Lus Hills Alliance, and I serve on the board as well for Woodbury County. The Lus Hills and Heritage Week is a new celebration and recognition that we have been trying to promote throughout the Lus Hills region, and Governor Reynolds signed the proclamation on the 24th of August, and other consecutive counties within the Lus Hills seven county region have been signing them. So we're bringing this to you today to...
Woodbury County will be the sixth of seven.
Sixth of seven. Okay, so we're not the final yet. That's good. We got the information late. But anyway, we're happy to bring this to you today and ask that you consider it for proclamation to promote the Lus Hills and economic development, tourism, and natural, historical, and cultural resources.
So we are not last and certainly not least. Comments from board members? Supervisor Potabom, you are our representative of Conservation.
Except Supervisor DeWitt has been attending most of the meetings during my work.
Well, that's how it works sometimes. I will read the proclamation of Woodbury County, Lus Hills and Heritage Week. It states, "Whereas the Lus Hills region of western Iowa includes some of Iowa's most beautiful and precious cultural, historic, and natural resources, lus, pronounced lus, a German term meaning loose or crumbly, is a yellowish sedimentary deposit of windblown silt forming a distinctive 640,000 acre range of hills running parallel to the Missouri River, 220 miles from Mound City, Missouri to Westfield, Iowa, passing through Fremont, Mills, Potawatomi, Harrison, Monona, Woodbury, and Plymouth Counties. Lus Hills, like Iowas, are rare, found in no other part of the world except near the Yellow River in China." We've discussed that actually at a previous board meeting. "Whereas Woodbury County, Iowa, lies within the Lus Hills region of Iowa, whereas the Lus Hills bluffs, as they're sometimes called, have a wealth of special wildlife, trees, and prairie plants. The state cited 39 rare animal and plant species there, the largest concentration in Iowa. Hills animals such as the plains pocket mouse or an eight box turtle, great plains skink, and spade foot toad are becoming rare and even endangered. Three-fourths of Iowa's original native prairies are there. Whereas the Lus Hills region is known as one of this county's prehistoric gems, home to more than 800 archaeological sites. Humans have been crossing through or living in the region for at least the past 12,000 years. Nationally significant are the late settlements of Mill Creek, 900 AD, the Glenwood Lodge sites, 1,000 AD, Kimball Valley Village, 1,100 AD, and the findings at the Turin gravel pit, 3,000 BC. Later, the region was used by the Iowae, Odo, Omaha, Sac, Fox for a short time, the Potawatomi peoples. Whereas the Lus Hills region celebrates a rich history of exploration and pioneer settlement from the Lewis and Clark Expedition and the Great Mormon Migration to the Mormon Californian Oregon Trails that attempted pioneers westward, the Underground Railroad, and the old transcontinental Lincoln Highway. Whereas the communities such as ours that lie within the Lus Hills continue to offer vibrant place in the culture, history, and arts of the region, drawing upon their unique heritage and geological influence. Many towns within the region are threaded together by the Lus Hills National Scenic Byway, named one of the 10 most scenic roads in the U.S. by nonprofit Scenic America. Currently, more than 60 parks offer a glimpse of the impressive nature of the hills and the six national landmarks located there. Whereas a significant grassroots effort is underway in our community and elsewhere within the Lus Hills region to celebrate the unique historical, cultural, geological, and aesthetic character of the Lus Hills. Whereas on August 24th, 2017, Iowa Governor Kim Reynolds proclaimed September 23 to October 1, 2017, as Lus Hills and Heritage Week, and urges public, private, and volunteer groups during this time to promote the Lus Hills, educate the public about them, and encourage all to see and enjoy this rare and precious region. Whereas, an extensive list of events and sites featured for Lus Hills and Heritage Week is published online. Therefore, we, the governing body of Woodbury County, Iowa likewise resolve and proclaim our support for Lus Hills and Heritage Week, and urge the public, private, and volunteer groups within and around our community during this time to promote the Lus Hills, educate the public about them, and encourage all to see and enjoy this rare and precious region." And I'll move approval of this proclamation.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I recall, we sent you to the lus soil of China.
Yes, you did.
Near the Yellow River, but not at taxpayer expense. So this is a very good thing. So thank you very much.
Yes. A lot of... A lot of people say and think Iowa's flat, but areas like this are, as it says, a gem. People find beautiful places to build homes and recreate around the Lus Hills. So would you like to speak to any engagement or community education initiatives that you would use something like this, you know, as a springboard?
Absolutely, absolutely. There are several events planned in the Sioux City and Woodbury County region and in actually communities throughout the seven counties, but in Woodbury County specifically, the Dorothy Pico Nature Center and Woodbury County Conservation Board are offering different events, prairie hikes, prairie awareness. We also in Sioux City are hosting at Briar Cliff University John Liu, who is from China, and he's going to be speaking about the Lus Hills soils and hills in China. So that data escapes me, but we will have all that information as posted online and as seen there. So appreciate the support.
And I would only comment because Dawn is the chair of this little group. We have a poster contest for youth that is going to be in all seven counties, including Woodbury County, and we're looking forward to some good involvement there in the schools.
Right. Currently, the entries are open for all ages K through 12, whether they're in public or private school or homeschool, and we encourage folks to look online for those instructions and submit their entries. There are cash prizes awarded, and each county will have separate, each category, and each county will receive awards as well as some overall awards from the seven counties.
Very good.
The overall judges are standing here.
We can't be one.
That truly is a fascinating connection to one other place in the world.
And if one of you would like to help judging, you're worthy of helping.
I was more interested in entering for the prize, but...
Well, re-enroll back in school.
Not in the age category. You've got some children to be around that wanted to look at. But yeah, we're encouraging the schools and public to become involved in many ways.
Very good.
Thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you for bringing it forward. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. We are three minutes until our 4:45 PM set time, so we'll begin and skip ahead to item 14A from Building Services Director Schmitz. An action item to approval of Cook's Correctional Kitchen Equipment Order through CBM Managed Food Service is quoted and not to exceed $125,000.
The item before you is to approval of costs for the kitchen equipment to be amortized over 10 years through the CBM contract, the food service contract. The cost that you see before you with the associated equipment on it does not have the taxes added to it, which there will be taxes since it's going through CBM. So we're asking to approve the full amount of $125,000 as part of item A.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Potabom. Discussion on the first motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. And the second motion?
The second motion is to approve quotes received from Goodwin Tucker, CW Suter, Thompson Electric, Midwest Mechanical for modifications to the existing kitchen and old conference room and the installation of the kitchen equipment in those areas.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Discussion. As you note, this is a major step in closing the outdated Perry Hills facility. So it's a good time for this.
And timeline for having everything stood up and ready to give a tour to the supervisors?
I think a good timeline, or the best timeline I can give you is probably eight weeks out. Some of the equipment is expected to take approximately six weeks. So I think eight weeks is an optimistic area. Hopefully, hopefully some of it'll arrive sooner. We'll see how that goes.
As you noted, this has been a lengthy process and appreciate your time and effort to bring it to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Thanks, Kenny. We'll return momentarily to your items. We are at a 4:45 PM set time. 13 is an action item, not to exceed $850,000 general obligation capital loan notes. First is item A, which is the public hearing on the authorization of loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the county thereunder. Is there anyone to speak at this public hearing?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the hearing be closed.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item B then is approval of resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action. Dennis, do you want to summarize any of what we're being asked to vote on?
Okay, the $850,000 is actually for the purchase of radios for sheriff's office public safety, conservation, and emergency services. Even though we are not going to exceed the 850, the actual true cost is $832,912.25. What this resolution will do, and this hearing has done, will provide the opportunity to borrow the money next May. We have up to 18 months to borrow the money under this resolution here. We usually do all of our borrowing in May, but we're a step ahead, which is good, to approve borrowing the money, even though we're spending ahead of time. On section four, I believe, on page two, I remember we did do the secondary roads on some projects down there with TIF money, but this covers us that we can spend it before we borrow. We're letting the public know the intent of where we're going.
Would you say that's a unique provision or a best practice that we'll continue to do?
It'll be a best practice we'll continue to do because we do a lot of projects, a lot of times even with building services, before we borrow the money. So it's something we will be doing in the future as a best practice.
Comments or questions? I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second by DeWitt. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We return to item 14 with Director Kenny Schmitz, and subitem B for action is approval of proposals from Goodwin Tucker, CW Suter. Was that the second part of the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Excuse me then. We had already moved on items A and B. Item C is the Trosper Hoy Juvenile Detention Master Control and Door Project.
Today, we received bids for the Trosper Hoy Juvenile Master Control project. Unfortunately, we have only received one bid for that. The bid was presented by Nelson Construction in the amount of $552,905. The cost, the bid presented to us seems a bit high and out of range. Therefore, I recommend that we are throwing bids out. And I have Kevin Ross here with GGA Architects who'd like to speak for a few moments and provide us with some thoughts and some options going forward. Also, as part of that, one of your next items is 14D, where we're asking for a hearing for the Trosper Hoy Juvenile Detention Master Control. I'd like the board to consider setting a future date and time for any hearing related with that project. Kevin?
Kevin Ross, Global Group Architects. As Kenny had mentioned, yeah, we received one bid on the project today for the juvenile detention center. Unfortunately, it was only one bid. Given the numbers that come in, I think we'd like the opportunity to evaluate that bid with the one contractor that submitted it and look at potential for repackaging or resculping the project to rebid at a future date. I think there's some opportunity there. I think we just need a chance to talk with the guys and find out where things come in higher, why it come in higher than what we anticipated on the projects.
Mr. Taylor.
So a couple of questions. First off, I appreciate we have a weekly meeting now between our Building Services Director and conference call. So the original was $450,000, the estimate. Is that right?
Correct.
So we're about $100,000 over what we thought. What are the legal means or processes by which you just simply rebid?
I think we'd have to rescope the project in a manner, I think for State Farm it was...
So in other words, you can't just, we're going to keep rebidding until we get the price we like, right?
Per the code sections, we have to change, if we choose to go out to rebid, we have to change the project significantly. We have to make a significant change in doing something, which...
Second question is, you have a pre-bid meeting in which you have one individual, and that was the case in this instance, correct?
That's correct.
So how do you solicit, for lack of a better term, other bidders? Because if I'm the only one in the room, you see where I'm going with this?
I was just one up.
Right, and that's a very good question. I think we'd like to reach out to a few more subcontractors and general contractors, see if there's some interest in depending on how we rescope the project, but see if, yeah, we can't... I think right now, a lot of people are busy. Of course, there's not a lot of participation because of the number of jobs that are going on right now. So I think we'd like to look at an ideal date to rebid this, or if there is some more availability from contractors and subcontractors.
And then my last, well, second to last question is, if you do the rescoping, I understand that there may be four doors that we had talked about that would be ideal to do in coordination with the LEC expansion project, but I understand that we're waiting on a staffing study, and so the timeline of that may be not fortuitous to do. So is that something that could be part of the rescoping potentially, or...
Taking those doors out, or...
Right.
That was part of our discussions right now on how we could rescope, but we've got a couple of plans and some areas to head there.
Okay, and then my last question, sorry for my ignorance, but the public hearing for the Trosper Hoy, the one that we're getting ready to do right now, is that being delayed specifically because we're not ready to potentially move on this?
So it's being delayed because a legal requirement is that it has to happen in four days, but not greater than 20 days before you enter into a contract. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be speaking legally, but that's what the code section says. By us delaying the acceptance next week, we would no longer fall within that four to 20-day timeframe that we're required to follow.
So we will not be holding today's public hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's all you got?
Questions? Seems to be a consensus on the recommendation. Does anyone object? Very well, so project will be rescoped.
I have the original bid submission. I'll give to Pat for his filing purposes.
Then, Abigail, procedurally, how should we go ahead with item 14D?
Well, it's been noticed, so you can have the hearing. It's just a matter of you would have to have another hearing later. So, I mean, if people are here to speak for or against the project, if they think doors are a bad idea or something like that, you can still let them speak, but you're going to have to hold another hearing.
Well, we could just move to delete it from the agenda, couldn't we not?
Or you could do that.
Mr. Taylor?
I think we should go ahead and hold the public hearing, and if nobody's here, then we just, it'll take an extra sentence.
Well, you're right. It's been noted. If we wanted to remove it, we could have done that earlier. So then, we are a couple of minutes ahead of that date, or date, time. Kenny, would you like to summarize anything else in a brief moment, overall?
Just as Kevin said and Shane reiterated, overall, we'd like to take a look at this and see how we can rescope this thing, and see where, you know, the numbers we weren't expecting may have come in higher. Take a look at that, analyze it, and figure out, okay, what made this a lot higher than what we had planned on. And then, maybe that's part of that scope change. We can try to massage or manipulate a little bit to, if we rebid this thing, to make it come back a little.
Right. I think that, finding a better date to bid as well, too. You know, if for some reason we can get this in conjunction with any of the other projects at the LEC or something like that, you know, that would be beneficial as well, too, just because of the mobilization cost for some of these out-of-state specific subcontractors on projects. Take a look at all the parts and pieces and see what we do to get this thing back going forward.
That's the logistical hurdle, is the economies of scale and making sure you can take advantage of that.
Anytime the county only receives one bid, or any other place where you only receive one bid, it's usually not favorable.
Very well, so we'll be asked to set another public hearing at a later date. With that, we are at our 5:55 PM set time. Item 14D, the public hearing for the Trosper Hoy Juvenile Detention Master Control and Door Project is now open. If anyone would like to speak for or against this item.
I'm Steve Nelson with Nelson Construction, who submitted the bid. Just to give a little input to help you guys going forward, the same problem I have is, I mean, the only bidder is, we only had one bid on the securities and the equipment coming to me. And I think as Kevin and I talked, those people just aren't out there. But another thing we had in here before, when I turned the bid in, I told Kevin, there's a $25,000 contingency because there's some electrical we weren't sure about, so we added that to the bid. So but if I can help, I mean, I know you guys can't award the job based off what you hear, but I'd gladly show them my information and some of the results if I could. But same way, we only had one bidder bid the securities and the door hardware. And that was over $350,000 just for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate having the good faith to come and explain that, because otherwise we wouldn't know that the bulk of that was being passed on, essentially not your cost. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Helpful to put a face with a bid. Anyone else to speak in this public hearing? Hearing none, I'll move the hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Item 15 from Rural Economic Development Director David Gleiser is an action item. Approval to accept the proposal and approve budgeting up to $7,293 in local option sales tax to pay for half of the membership dues for rural cities that want a Simcoe membership and FY 1718.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development Director. So this is a follow-up from last week when the board charged me with the task of getting a proposal for Simcoe to provide dues-based membership to our 14 rural cities. The backup materials show the annual due cost, the cost of dues for the 14 rural cities in question. I would say at this point, there are one, two, three, four, five, six communities that have signed to renew their membership with Simcoe. Half of their dues, the county's cost, would be roughly $3,600. Last year, we did budget the full $7,293. We only expended $4,288. So right now, there are still obligated $3,005. Talked with Dennis Butler, and he can de-obligate those funds, as well as add some additional funds to get us at that $7,292.50. I will make the calls to all of the rural cities that have not already signed up and make them aware that in this agreement, scope of services are essentially the same, except for we are going to have planning staff at Simcoe meet with them initially to develop a project priority list, and Simcoe staff, as well as myself, will be calling them at least once quarterly to make sure that they aren't losing services that we could be providing them. So just going to basically follow up with them more and ask if there's anything we can do to help, so.
Well, this is a good initiative. I think we have leveraged, you know, 10 times the dollars we put in, indirect and indirect costs, as you mentioned, and I think it makes sense to start with the skin-in-the-game analogy. That's proven helpful. So I'm very supportive of this. Are there any other comments? I'll second the motion by Raddick. Discussion or comments or questions on how this will move forward?
What I'll probably end up doing is working with Dennis Butler to get those numbers de-obligated and re-obligated, and then once we get a firm commitment on the cities that do or don't want to participate, I can either send the board a memo or come back in front of you like this and give you an update on the balance, and then let Dennis de-obligate the balance, so.
Very good. Hearing no other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item 16 from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera, includes action item A. This is to receive and consider bids for project number on 220th Street.
Project number M.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm not sure we received any bids for the first project. I do have one that's unlabeled, so I will open it and see.
Mystery bid.
There is interest in this. I've received some emails asking the status.
Different project. On the seal code, yeah, I've had a number of inquiries from the public. I guess what... We only had one response request on doing a portion of the work. Finding seal code contractors today is getting more and more difficult. The ones that, Ben spent a good deal of time on the phone last week. The ones that, Ben spent a good deal of time on the phone last week contacting a few of them that we know of. A lot of them are booked out the next year. They're doing work for regular clients, some of the cities and towns who do that type of work regularly, and they're, they're booked up on that portion of the work. There is an interested contractor in doing the reclamation part, which we may work to get a quote from that individual, and at least get that portion of the project completed this year, put some type of a temporary seal on it to get us through the winter, or, or move the work over into next spring, when we might have a little more favorable time period for that to work, but. We'll re-scope and, and see where we end up. Like I said, we only had one responsive contractor for the reclamation part, and apparently he was unable to secure somebody to assist in the other portion of the project, which is the seal code. This is the permit you approved earlier. I guess on to item B. With the chairs.
Go ahead with item B.
Permission. This is for a bridge replacement with a box culvert. This is a replacement of a, of a short-span bridge under County Road D-22, right on the city-county corporate line with the city of Cushing. They're a town under 400, so it's a foreign-to-market extension, it is awards jurisdiction. The structure has been posted due to some severe deterioration. We've designed a box culvert to replace it at this location. First bid is from Midwest Contracting, L.C. of Marshall, Minnesota. Bid bond was included. Total bid price, $175,375. One seven five, three seven five. Next is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa. Bid bond included. Bid price, $145,852.80. One four five, eight five two, eighty. Next bid is from Nelson and Rock Contracting of Ottawa, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $159,711.69. One five nine, seven one one, sixty nine. We have a bid from Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $157,470.25. One five seven, four seven zero, twenty five. This appears to be the final bid from LA Carlson Contracting of Merrill, Iowa. Bid bond is included. Total bid price, $158,693.68. One five eight, six nine three, sixty eight.
So were there any irregularities in Dixon's bid?
I would like to examine it to, we did have a cast-in-place option on this project. I don't know which option they pursued, I'm not sure there's no mistakes in the bid.
Okay.
I would prefer that the board return these to the engineer's office for review.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Radig. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Item C then is to receive quotes for HMA Levelers for 2017.
First bid is from Knife River Midwest of Sioux City, Iowa. Let the bid tabs get around before I read.
Who was it again?
Knife River.
Knife River of Sioux City.
Thank you.
Total quotation for the work is scoped, $75,346.34. Seven five, three four six, thirty four. The next quote is from Hennington Construction of Atlantic, Iowa. Uh, total quota price, $101,585.20. Looking at the unit prices, I think we can recommend award to Knife River Midwest. It is higher than what our estimate was, but we haven't let one of these type of projects in a while.
So what was it per ton on the?
Two fifteen seventy five.
Okay, yeah, make a big difference. Yeah, I'll move the approval to Knife River.
I'll second the motion by Radig. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Item D is to receive quotes for Slurry Levelers 2017.
That was the mystery bid. And we received only one bid. Bid price is $116,0596.25.
How important is this to have done?
We'd like to take this bid back and take a look at it. Do some comparisons to other counties. Plymouth County has done the last slurry level bid we did. We did that right ahead of Ragbri. I'd like to take a look at those prices and see how this compares before we make an award, so. Recommend they re-return to the engineer for review.
What would happen if you, I mean, what it, you know, what do you expect to find?
I just need to refamiliarize myself with the prices.
And?
I, you know, the other thing we might end up doing is, is take a look at an alternative method for repairs.
How many bridges are needing this?
What do we have, two bridges on it, Ben?
The vast majority of the work is crack leveling, where we have the rollover cracks from transverse cracking on, on county roads. The slurry is very good at filling those areas, bringing back our right quality. The roads that we had proposed for this are in the neighborhood of 12 to 16 years old since their last resurfacing, and that's when that rollover on those cracks occurs. Right quality is deteriorating, but basically, we have good slabs between those cracks. So we're trying to re, to improve them and, and, uh, and maintain our, our life expectancy out there. With where this price is, I think we need to take a look at the scope of the project as part of it. It's getting right up there above what I had budgeted. That's one of the reasons for my hesitation.
Well, at some point, you can almost re-deck, because, can you almost do a new deck?
Um, no, this isn't for an entire bridge deck. We have, what, four bridge approaches that are part of this project?
We're getting whole bridges for about this price.
Pardon me?
You're getting like a whole bridge for almost the same price.
Well, again, what we have is settlement on the pavement ahead of the bridge, so the bridge deck is fine. This is where we have the bump coming off of the bridge. It isn't a deep enough bump that we can use asphalt on the repair. The slurry is only about a three-eighths thick layer, so we can lay it in in two or three layers to get us up to that total thickness and, and restore that smoothness. But the bridge approaches are only a part of it. The rest of it is that slurry crack leveling and attempt to improve right quality out there. Again, majority of the work was concentrated in the north part of the county, K-49, K-64, D-12. D-12 is the majority of the work.
Okay.
Uh, again, I'd, I'd like to take a look at it, possibly discuss with a contractor if we consider holding those prices for a smaller gen. This isn't a, this is work we've been trying to get to, get some improvements on to extend our life between resurfacing projects. And we've had that discussion, I think, before. We're getting about enough money a year in our foreign-to-market program to resurface 10 to 12 miles per year. We need to do something to extend the life of our pavements, because it's putting us out there beyond the life expectancy of a, an asphalt resurfacing. Slurry leveling of the cracks, seal coating, micro-surfacing, those type things help extend your life and get more longevity out of the pavement. Hundred sixteen thousand is, is up there for what I had budgeted this year for, for pavement rehabilitation, so. Again, I'd like to take a look, examine it, perhaps visit with the contractor about it, and, uh, again, see if they can hold that price and maybe re-scope the project smaller within my budget.
Move to receive and refer to the county engineer for recommendation.
Second.
Second by Potabam, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Item E for action is to consider approval of federal aid project agreement for project number as stated.
Pair and 134 is a good way to refer to it. That, that tag will hang with it for a very long time. We have arranged the, or, we received money through our region, the SRTPA, Regional Planning Affiliate, for money to resurface our County Road D-54. We worked on this project from Danbury to County Road L-27, 2015?
Yeah, it was.
And we were able to obtain funding for 2018 to complete that project. We're looking at a million dollars in RPA money, an estimated seventy, or $750,000 in Woodbury County foreign-to-market funds to complete the work. Recommend approval of the agreement.
We'll move it.
Second.
Second by Radig, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero.
This also requires the signature of the county auditor.
Item F is to consider approval of plans for project number M-HC-17-4.
This project is for repair of Hungry Canyon's weir that was damaged in the 2016 storm event back June 15th, 2016. We have $67,000, a little over that, in Hungry Canyon's grant, to assist with the cost of that repair. We're proposing a letting September 19th for the project. Recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Item G is to receive quotes for one new tractor for the Secondary Roads Department.
We currently have five farm-style tractors. We utilize two of the, well, three of those for roadside mowing, two operate a boom mower, or one operates a boom mower, the other two operate bat wing mowers behind them. We have a couple smaller tractors we use for other utility projects around county yards. This one is to replace a Massey Ferguson tractor that is getting some age, it's one of the roadside mowing tractors. It's the one that operates out of Correctionville and takes care of the eastern half of the county's paved road system. Our first bid is from Icon Ag and Turf. I do have bid tabs for those. I've got one already. Total bid price as specified is $95,957.50. Trade-in on the current county tractor in 1993 Massey Ferguson is $5,000. Net purchase price, $90,957.50. The next bid is from SNS Equipment of Lauton, Iowa. Total bid price as specified, $90,000. Less trade-in, $7,500. Net purchase price, $82,500. Final bid is from D and K Implement. Their main office is out of Pomeroy, Iowa, they have a sales facility in Correctionville. Total price as specified, $69,960. Less trade-in of $5,000. Net purchase price, $64,960. I request the board return the quotations to the county engineer for examination and recommendation for award.
So moved.
Second.
Second by DeWitt, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes five zero. Item H for action is to consider approval of a contract for gravel stockpiling at 10 stockpile locations for FY 18.
We've negotiated prices with Halat Materials of We've negotiated prices with Halat Materials of, uh, Wall Lake, Iowa for supply of our stockpiles for fiscal year twenty eighteen. Total price for the stockpiled materials at the, uh, locations, nine hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. Recommend approval of the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Potabom. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Mark, I have your signed signatures. Item seventeen from the Board of Supervisors, myself, is an action item for the creation of a standardized annual evaluation form for department heads. Uh, Woodbury County Supervisor Liaisons should begin evaluating department heads annually. That is over a calendar year as we appoint liaisons, uh, on this board over a calendar year with a standardized performance evaluation. This is long overdue. Uh, we had discussion in the past about the role of supervisors supervising. Uh, this will not be, uh, an unfamiliar recommendation, uh, to Supervisor Taylor. Uh, because as noted last year, uh, different, uh, evaluation of goals, documents were composed by liaisons or the chair for department heads that hired, that are hired and answered directly to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, this was a, a baseline because in the past, uh, we had discovered it had not been done annually, uh, on a countywide basis. And in conversations with, uh, HR Director Gilland, I came up with, uh, this, a rough timeline of, of getting this before the board uh, by or before our October thirty-first meeting. Uh, as was done last year, these evaluations were, uh, completed in the November, December timeframe. That gave supervisors, uh, roughly a year to evaluate performance. The difference I'd like to see this year is that instead of simply having a discussion of goals, uh, we would have a discussion of how goals were met, how expectations were met. We'd have some, uh, feedback, uh, that could be retained. And we would have that to look back on because as, as, uh, I found out coming on as a new supervisor, uh, there were, there were considerable gaps in, uh, the evaluations of, of department heads over the years. And, and some of our department heads have been with us for a long time. And so I'd like to see this, uh, be approved. Um, I'd like there to be a standardized form because last year, what we had to work with, again, as I mentioned in the agenda item, is a sort of a narrative that was suggested by the chairman, uh, that we would follow some sort of, uh, a general understanding of what to ask for, what to document. But because supervisors all have different styles, there were several different, you know, there's varying links. There's, uh, you know, it's a narrative. This is something that you may discuss different items with different department heads. And that's, if we're going to be moving towards evaluating performance and giving some sort of feedback in that way, it's necessary that it be standardized to a degree and we evaluate fairly. And we have, uh, that discussion of, of goals that were established in twenty sixteen as well as set new goals. Uh, it, it shouldn't be a foreign concept to, uh, to anyone in the management world, uh, what this, you know, the utility of this and having that sort of, uh, feedback. So I'd like to invite Director Gilland up if, if, uh, if you had any thoughts on this. And then open it up to board discussion.
I think standardization's an excellent process. I, I do agree strongly with the Chairman Ong that, uh, there had not been a, a good systematic, uh, review of department heads for some huge gaps there. It makes it very difficult for us to formulate goals as a county that are achievable if we don't have goals for our department heads. So I, I think it would be, I, I think that's, it's just absolutely the right direction to go.
Very good. Uh, does anyone have questions for Ed? If not, you can take a seat and we can discuss.
A couple of questions if I may. So one of them would be, do you, and I know you don't have this finished right now, obviously, because that's what we're taking up tonight. But how much do you believe that this would differ from the state master, uh, valuation that is used for all employees rather than?
I, I think we see perhaps a little more emphasis on, uh, just the overall achievement of the department as opposed just to the individual achieve, the individual achievements. Because certainly, uh, what a department head is evaluated on is how their department has grown, how the department, uh, and I mean that in their skills and their abilities and their work towards county goals. So I see it more as a, a, just a, an avai- an overall department evaluation to be paired in there with the individuals.
Okay. And in that, would you anticipate that there'd be, uh, room or area for narrative to be able to describe each of those points? Because one thing that I've always been hesitant on in evaluations is if everybody gets the acceptable and then there's no real feedback. So if that's a, a possibility, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
I think that's a good possibility. And I, I think you, you can have some things happen with an employer, with a department head that are really completely unacceptable. But at the same time, you can have some very positive things that they've done. So you have to make allowance for that in that narrative. And I, I think that's extremely important.
In, in other words, sometimes a check mark needs some explanation to it. And I think that's a good balance. You know, what I want to see is just that the same questions are being commented on, you know, from different department head to, you know, across the board. So there's no, uh, no disparities. Mr. Potabom?
Yeah, I don't know if this is for, or for those who've been on longer, but how many department heads do we have that answer to the morgue?
Mine.
Are, are nine?
Nine.
I was trying to just put them together.
I, I was writing them down as we went because there's, there's quite a few that Sulan District Health doesn't, Conservation Board does, and Emergency Management. So they're in some unique situations.
Cause I, I, I tried it a couple of times and I came up with different numbers every time. So just doing it from memory.
I'll have to take off my shoes to count.
I saw a hand raised. Did, did you like?
No, um, um, Mr. Gilland, answer the question.
Okay, okay, very good. And we do deal with, uh, as a county government, of course, different oversight and different departments that the board may help to fund or, or, or have present at our department head meetings that, you know, receive oversight from a, from a performance standpoint from another, uh, you know, appointed body or elected body. But there are, uh, obviously those that we are, you know, responsible for supervising. And I do think it's fair to give that, um, I don't know, what, what other word to use besides power or, or oversight to the appointed supervisors over those different departments. That's one of the important roles of the chair and, uh, uh, because those, I would like to see those supervisors have that ability to write that narrative, to, uh, judge that performance uh, so that, you know, someone that's watched that department head in action for almost a year can look back on the last, uh, report and make their own rather than just having it all be on, on one of us. Of course, if there's, you know, as last year, there were, uh, some cases where then Chairman Taylor would take over and, and, and offered to write uh, one of those if, if, you know, whatever reason it was not able to be done by anyone else. So we do owe it to our department heads, I think, to give them some sort of status update and to receive their feedback and have that documented. And we've certainly been moving in that direction with our, with the True Speak Initiative and communication, having things documented. But, but an annual evaluation again is nothing foreign. Comments, Mr. Taylor?
All right, sorry for a second then. So I applaud, uh, you for bringing this forward. I think it's a good step for accountability, but also to champion and shepherd growth. You know, you, you don't know what your, uh, improvement metrics are, expectations are of your employer unless you have those conversations. So a couple of, a couple of questions along with this. Board administrative staff, so, and I'm thinking about a couple of folks in front of us as well as Karen. My assumption is that would fall underneath the chair, but is that yours as well? Okay. So we're down three. Um, and then beyond that, the other question, because some of these fall in, I've got, and if I could just list them off. Building services, emergency services, planning and zoning, economic development, juvenile detention, secondary roads, the human resources director, uh, and veteran affairs. Is that one that?
It's got a board.
I know it has a board. I'm just wondering, is that an annual?
But I, from my conversation with other counties, similar type of setup, uh, the valuation did lie with the, um, that the valuation and supervision did lie with the Board of Supervisors.
So that's one.
That'll be a part of your recommendation to the board once you figure out exactly which positions would receive which standardized form.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. This is a, this is good for, you know, to set a expectation, some accountability for our HR director to get this to the board. And, and I think you'll, you know, be uncovering those questions and, and finding out, finding out what, uh, makes the most sense.
And then where there's a dual role, would you anticipate that those?
Good question. As in the past, I think it would be helpful for, uh, if there's two supervisors assigned as oversight, for them to come to a agreement and conduct that evaluation interview, whatever you want to call it, uh, together. Uh, if that becomes an issue, then we can discuss as a board having appointments of primary and secondary liaisons and it would fall to the primary. But that's just, uh, I don't anticipate any sort of, any sort of disagreement. Uh, but of course, that's a possibility. And so that's not necessarily my call. I think we should talk about that as a board if that's going to be an issue. Should I answer it?
I think so. The only other thing I'd say, I, I think it'd be helpful maybe if we had a, a best recommended process, which could be meeting beforehand with a person discussing goals. And then afterwards, it just seems like it'd be nice to have some uniformity so it wasn't, well, I met with my liaison and then afterwards I get to, to go through the evaluation, but somebody else got it in the till. You know, it just might be a good process wise that everybody has the same uniformity as if it was one person. And I know that's difficult with five different people, but to the extent that we can. But again, I think it's a good idea, so appreciate it.
Ed, if you could also compose then some sort of a memo with a recommended process?
Sure.
I think that would be helpful. Uh, I think we're asking for it, so you don't need to worry about stepping on any toes.
Good, thank you.
But it is fair to have that expectation to not re- simply receive something in your mail till and.
When would you like to have that memo back?
Uh, same date as you bring the standardized form to us.
Okay.
At least by October thirty-first. And that's just to give the board some flexibility in November and December, uh, to conduct those meetings. And it doesn't have to be just one meeting, uh, but it needs to be at least one meeting. Mr. Taylor?
Sorry, I know I said last question, but I lied. Um, the real, the real last question is this. So we all, I, I have an interest in knowing how department heads are doing and, and for the most part are doing very well and doing great work. How does the rest of the board get that? I know in the past that I think we put a copy in the everybody's till. I don't know if that's something else to?
Yeah, and, and I would applaud you last year for, for doing that. Uh, realizing that once there's an evaluation of goals or an evaluation of performance, uh, after it's been vetted by the supervisor, it should be shared with the rest of the board confidentially and also with HR director. So that practice would certainly continue.
And I, I think at times, uh, one thing, uh, one thought I may add just for consideration. There are times when the different department heads are going to interact with enough different people. We all touch a lot of people, uh, that, uh, perhaps not only the primary, um, individual might put the evaluation and do the, be responsible for the majority of the, of the, uh, evaluation, but other comments from other board members, I think, would be welcome too. You may see things that, uh, the person who's most directly involved doesn't.
Sure. Well, that's one of the reasons we have committee reports is we can all be updated how things are going. And we can certainly follow up ourselves and, but it's helpful to funnel it through a few liaisons.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other thoughts? Again, we couldn't have done this without, uh, the evaluation of, of goals last year. And so that's, you know, again, the baseline. I would expect that those documents would be referenced during all of these evaluations. I will move to direct the Human Resources Department to produce a standardized performance evaluation of department heads.
Second.
A, a, a second is forthcoming. For board approval at the October thirty-first meeting earlier for board members to evaluate the performance of department heads over the twenty seventeen calendar year in the months of November, December. Second by DeWitt. Discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Item eighteen is the chairman's report. Nothing specific to report was, of course, a holiday weekend. Uh, today though, I did participate in an ACO conference call for the Programs and Services Standing Committee, of which I am one of the four esteemed vice chairs. Uh, it was mostly an introductory meeting and there'll be a follow-up which I'll report on more extensively. Are there any other reports on committee meetings? Mr. Taylor?
Uh, historic committee meeting. And if you've seen the three large displays at the top of the steps, um, those were created. Those are going to be used at Art Splash. Thank you very much to Jim Young and to Lisa McNeil for volunteering over the Labor Day weekend and having a kid-centric, uh, activity. Um, so that'll be great. This thing's coming together. Um, we have pricing for a thousand, uh, twenty-four page reprints of American Bungalow, a sixteen-page kids booklet, the eight-page fold-out self-guided tour. And I think we have things, um, kind of locked and loaded for, uh, an audio tour. I was at the Black Hills and I found devices that we can actually hold to the ear as a transducer. And, uh, it's pretty cool. So I think that thing is coming along and a lot of good volunteers. Rex Mueller, uh, our new police chief, also introduced, we're not going to show it to you quite yet, but the, uh, the design, uh, of the poster. Um, and talked about thirty, or I'm sorry, fifty, uh, signed limited editions, uh, being, uh, screen printed for a very, very reasonable cost. Let me put it that way, so.
Do you want to talk about some of the ramping up on that?
So what we're looking to do is, this thing's really cool. Um, the, all of the artistic, what they're doing is they're doing a photographic display, but then it gets screen printed. So we're talking about doing an unveiling of this, um, perhaps at the interpretive center, maybe even up here. Um, having some drum roll, uh, and fanfare along with that. Also engaging different community groups as well as media outlets, uh, to do different stories of craftsmen and artisans and their lives, uh, leading up to the event. What am I missing, anything?
Uh, I think you already mentioned some of the other graphic design, the smaller versions.
Yeah, so there's a couple of other versions that were like the B and C choice, but they're equally, uh, good.
Invitations.
Mm-hmm. For, uh, invitations for the banquet, um, perhaps even another teaser, so to speak, in the paper two or three months prior. So, um, things are coming together.
Any other reports on committee meetings?
I got a question on this one though. Is there any anticipated load on the security team with all these extra people coming through? Do we want to entertain bringing an extra body on the security team? I mean, if we're going to have that many more visitors come through here?
For the first through the fifth in May or even earlier?
Well, I, I mean, I, I just think it's a valid question.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we anticipating that many more people?
I would say, uh, the first to the fifth, I think, of May, we're talking twenty eighteen, I think, may be very, very busy. And I think that that might be, um, certainly appropriate during that week, um, just to have an extra, extra body on. I could see that. I don't know before that, um, how many more visitors we'll have. I'm liking to think that the audio tour is going to be so good, um, that we're going to have that many more. But I'm not, I'm just not sure prior to that. But I could definitely see that week, um, needing maybe an extra person or two.
We've, uh, spoke about targeting. We've spoke about targeting the hours of ten AM to two PM each day.
Okay.
Rather than the entire day. So we might have a demonstration or a seminar, sort of a deal in the morning. And then we'd have a sponsored lunch. And then afterwards, we might have an informative dignitary come and speak or some sort of show and tell or a tour. So if that helps, we, we are planning that period of time each day. But it's pretty far ahead to think about budgeting for staff, I would say.
I think it's a good question to keep in mind as we go forward.
Some of the dignitaries might have their own security, especially when governor comes. Anything else on that one?
I, I did have a meeting with the third judicial district of Corrections. Again, right now, their biggest dealing is the unknown for the coming budget. They're, they're hoping this year, maybe the state will let them know a little earlier than it did last year, that they're taking seventy thousand dollars away. But I told them that, that is what it is in Des Moines. You never know when you're going to get told. And they have been scheduling and programming for not filling one position. So they're, right now, we think we've got it budgeted, because we know the seventy thousand is again gone this year. Or whether or not it'll be more, we don't know yet. But they've been doing a real good job. Unfortunately, part of the problem is, like I talked about the last time we met, they're, the person handling the low risk to reoffend, instead of one person handling a hundred, it's going to be five hundred and maybe more. And that still worries me a little bit. I think you're giving some of those people the opportunity to reoffend when you're hoping they don't. But that is what it is. But they're dealing with it pretty well, I think. I think they've got a good grasp on it, handling it well. That's all I had.
Any other reports on committee meetings? Item twenty-nine, any citizen concerns? County engineer Mark Nero.
This Friday, Woodbury County's hosting the Hungry Canyons Alliance meeting. It'll be at the Bronson Community Center. Be a brief tour. Hoping one or more of the board members might be able to attend. One of you could welcome to, they've, we received a great deal of grant money from this group. We'll be showing them some of our current and past projects, so.
Could you send the board some of that invitation information?
Well, it should been, did, none of you have received it?
I got it.
I will, I will get it out to the rest of you then tomorrow morning, so.
Very good.
I didn't realize you weren't all on the mailing list, so. I know you get inundated probably with email, so I hadn't, I hadn't sent it yet, but I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any board concerns?
I did want to bring up a couple of things. The chamber dinner on Thursday, did we have a quorum on that that we need to post for?
I believe so.
And then on Monday, September eleventh, the Moville Chamber invited us. I was planning to try to get out of work to go to that. I didn't know if anyone else was.
I will be, I will be going and I.
We have a third, then we probably need to.
I saw that your email was replied to already and noted that it was just you and I.
Okay.
So there won't be a quorum there.
And I'm not sure I got the email.
On September eleventh?
Right.
It was originally an invitation to the liaisons.
Was it? Oh, I thought it was an invitation to all of us. Okay. Well?
I don't feel left out, but I'll just be over here.
I can't attend anyway, so.
Certainly, we will issue a notice if, like to get in contact with David and see, see about that.
Okay.
The issuer of the invitation, David Gleiser. And our board office will work on that quorum notification for the chamber dinner. So we won't need to act on that. Any other board concerns? Thank you. We are adjourned.